Thank you so much for being here to our regular Floris County Council meeting for January the 10th. It is now 6:02. I knew I do call this meeting to order. Please rise as we join in our invocation with Mr. Bob Herndon and followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. I wish to tell you, Father, dear Lord, we are so thankful for the time. We are so thankful for each other. And I ask that this coming New Year, that we can all come together and work on how many, with the good of our city. That's all the councilman, the mayor, mayor put in. And I ask again that he be with us as we work for you. Ask all of the decisions that are made to be made to your honor and to your authority. My ask, all of these things in Jesus Christ's name and for his sake, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, my pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Sorry for getting adjusted in the new chairs that are not rolling at all. Okay, we do have a forum for tonight's meeting. All council members are in attendance. Thank you so much for being here, council members. At this time, I will open the floor to any citizens' comments. We give the opportunity for any citizens to address the council. If you would, please state your name.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Claudia Garza, and still council members. There's one thing that really sticks out from the beginning of the year, and our streets seem to not be what they really should be. I moved here probably three years ago, and they kind of still seem the same. Coming into town, C Street, which is your main street coming off the highway. And in all that travel, I think your streets need to be a little more pleasing to the eye. You're coming into town, I don't know how your projects work, you know, to where your priorities, you know, take place. But if you could look into, you know, really working with the streets this year, I think that would be a great start. You know, peanut festival comes around, you get lots of out-of-town people. And it would just be nice to see some streets that are not just patched, but really taken care of. That's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
Daniel DeRado, Florisville. Okay, I'm not sure exactly what item it is on your agenda, but you're going to be talking about maintenance, sports complex. Every one of the council members here on the dais tonight has been involved in the development of the park. Marisa through the FEDC, Gloria through the 4A as a council member. And of course Gloria, Gerari, who won, who took one of the final votes to make it happen. And when we all started this project, we all said, okay, it's going to serve the needs of the community and also be a showplace for visitors, to host tournaments for out-of-town guests. So when we vote on maintenance tonight, let's make sure we hire a professional that knows what they're doing to showcase this as a place to visit for our kids to enjoy and for visitors to enjoy also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments this evening? If none, moving on to item 1A, consideration and action to approve the minute meetings for the regular council meeting on December the 2018. It was a long meeting, so council, I hope you've had a chance to look them over.
I make a comment, Madam Mayor, on those, on A and B, how those are above.
Yes.
On those council members that are, or new council member, Jimenez and Martinez. It should have been there at least abstaining or absent or something instead of just blank. So that way the public will know, you know, the reason why. I assume if I'm wrong, please correct me on that.
I think that would be easy to correct.
They were not counted because those minutes that you voted on, those first two items, it was with prior council before they took seat as council members.
But it's their Jimenez and Martinez.
Because I have to list them on the, I'm listing them on the chart now. They were seated in their positions because it was items on the agenda for that night, but they could not vote on the items because those two meetings, those two minutes took place with prior council.
Is that correct, Senator?
I think what you, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I may, Councilman Ortiz, you understand that the ones that voted on it was the prior council meetings, but is it correct or do you'd like to make a correction on the record to reflect that the other two individuals were present, however not able to vote, they had to abstain? If you could just make that correction on the minutes, that would be proper.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
With that, I would like to make a motion to move ahead.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Ortiz to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to your presentation and discussion, item A, I have, we talked about this previously to put this on the agendas until further notice about the spectrum update, top of the town.
Yes, and so if I could approach you, give the information to the council, because this was not their package.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to say that this is not the entire package. Actually, I have submitted this package to the city attorney. So we worked on it with staff to find a documentation for the complaints of the repairs and what we're able to do. We have over 124 locations that we receive complaints and your work orders for. And then according to our comp controller, we were $112,108 above what we budgeted for this particular year, 2017, 2018. Historically, we've never actually even used all of that line item. This year, we went over $112,000. And then additionally insurance, I mean overtime of $21,587. So, you know, a normal typical year, we would have overtime, but this was in excess of what we normally do. So the total damage that I was able to document is about $133,691. The second page is the original letter that Sylvia put together that we originally sent to them. Previously, our public works director came up with about $46,071. Your direction was to dig it a little bit deeper. And so we've been able to do that. We've also have photos that we've been able to identify the locations because the guys were taking photos of the damage that they did. And so I submit those to the city attorney, who will forward it on to their attorney, and then we can set up a meeting this year to talk about how we're going to address that. Mayor, I know you receive questions all the time, but what is spectrum going to be done? I don't know. They told us March of last year, or December of last year, and still they're going on digging and hitting things as we go day by day. So this is what we able to do to document. I have complaints, I have photos, I have work orders. I killed a tree today. And so the attorney's going to be reviewing that, and then we'll set up a meeting. And I believe she said the meeting would be here at City Hall?
Yes.
So that we can stop that discussion. But she did originally send that letter to their special attorney back in March of '22. So Mayor, based on your direction, you wanted us to have it on the agenda every Thursday when we have a meeting. We'll have it on the meeting. For next Thursday, to talk about where we are for the next meeting, where we are, if nothing else to say publicly, that we were able to schedule that meeting.
I prefer it that way so that it does, it stays on everybody's minds that we are not giving up on this. Because we continue to get, I know for myself, I continue to get complaints about damages that have occurred, that have happened through this. Councilman Jimenez?
Yes, I think we need to reiterate on the machine use and stuff, not only just on the overtime and parts, but the rental from our equipment that we paid so much money for. You know, we sacrifice a lot to get new equipment, keep it up to date, and we're having to use it on someone else, you know what I'm saying? So we've got to get compensated for that.
We'll get out the hours of equipment, but we had to use Marcus of that, and I can add that to that. Yes, sir.
Any other question?
So are they still working as far as doing the lines in all that area?
Yes, Mayor, they're still working. And it's all over the city. They have three different contractors, so it's not, it's all one. It's a BCOM, a B Reynolds, and another one that actually isn't different. So it's not the same people. So sometime when you see them, you don't know if it's spectrum or whatever, but they have three different contractors that's working here in the city of Florisville simultaneously. And there's no other reason, I can't tell you that they don't, the other night they were at the library. It was them, and the next day they're down the street. So I can't say those are patterned if they follow.
Well, I think they're on Forest Street now by Mrs. Montoya's house because I saw a lot of orange nets around there.
Yes.
And that was one of the complaints that we received, that they left piles of debris, they left holes, they damaged mailboxes. You know, they left cords, they went on property. It's a whole host of different things that people were upset about. So we were able to document as much as we could once we started. And unquestionably, we missed them. I know what you think, this is a comprehensive list. Because when it first started, we thought, okay, one or two, and then it just escalated. So we were trying to document. So I needed to, because the attorney's going to want some documentation. So the work orders, the complaints, the emails, the emails that you receive, that you forward up to me are actually in this package for the attorney.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we can go ahead and continue to let them keep working when they've done so much damages?
We have, they don't have to even have a permit. I'll let the attorney explain how they can work in our utility easement, but they don't even have to prepare them, Sylvia.
That's correct. Basically, they have a right to come in and do the work that they are doing. Unfortunately, the issues with all the damages that have arise. I know that when I had spoken to their attorney, they had indicated, I think, that there were some issues because of not marking the lines and stuff of that nature. Why they're still working, I don't know, especially, I guess we might have to look at that, Henrietta, and see if there's a way to put a rush on it, because my understanding, they were pretty much supposed to have been done as well.
We're going to have a second year, is that about right now? Right. And I really should have asked that we continue to keep on them to give us an update of where they are. And so we know ahead of time that we're going to be in this area or that area. And if you would, ask how much longer they have.
I'll do that. What I'll do is I'll communicate with Mr. King. He is the attorney, he's the council for Spectrum. I will contact him tomorrow, Mayor, and I will ask him for an update to see when they should be out of our city and see what else needs to be done. And then I'll let the council know.
Is that for you? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And if you like, I have a full complete package here. You can see some of the pictures I've been more than happy to share, all the wonderful colorful pictures that we're able to do. So it is an issue. Staff is taking it seriously, and we hope that we can wrap it up. We all want high-speed internet, but it comes at a serious cost, but it shouldn't be our cost.
Thank you.
That's it, my report on that issue, Mayor, is that okay?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to the city manager's report, grant application updates?
Yes. Okay. I'm not going to read the report because you have it in front of you. But I will say that today, I am the new EDC director. Mr. Gerard. We met with Intrepid to talk about these wonderful grants that we have. The ADA Sidewalk Downtown Realization Grant, the city has received a preliminary approval for $250,000. And I want to thank the Council Ortiz for pushing it forward and supporting that. Supporting that directive to me to apply. And I want to applaud the council for allowing me to do that application. We did receive preliminary approval. I did send it over to Judy Langford, our grant coordinator, and she says, congratulations on order. So I'm anticipating any day now, any week. Now, this is states and not the federal government, so they're still working, that we should be able to get official notice and how to proceed going forward. So we met with Intrepid to talk about what things are we going to do and, you know, how it's going to work. If you can imagine, and Councilman Arista Jimenez, we went out during the time where we were going door-to-door, judging the holiday context, that's what everybody on our side was at sidewalks. Well, it's going to be quite an ordeal of how we're going to rip them out, have them open business, and those kind of things. So we're hoping that we can coordinate an effort. So we're trying to do some pre-planning rather than post-planning. And along that same line, we met to talk about the parking lot issues in the back. So we're hoping to do their back door very soon. We should start that April and May so that we can tear up their front door going forward.
Henrietta, let me ask you something. First, I would like to thank you, Henrietta, for this grant that you pushed for. And the community, the businesses, and especially the council. If it weren't for the resolution that state needed for first to push, the grant writer, Judy, and everybody that helped with this. But most of all and foremost, this project is overdue. That is the main topic, overdue. Many handicapped, disabled individuals do have issues. And with this grant, and hopefully the completion of this project, the frustration will hopefully alleviate those issues. And I would like to thank the community. I mean, you know, that's teamwork. And that is what we need in the city from now on, teamwork. And that, thank you, Mayor and council, and everybody else.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It is teamwork. Because one of the requirements for the application is that we had to get 20 business owners to sign a letter to say that they were supportive of it. And EDC signed the letter, and they also are doing the match. As well, we'll have some matching to do with staffing. But we received 20 people to actually take the time to sign to say that they were supportive of this application. So I'm really, really excited.
On the FEDC too.
Okay, so the next wonderful news I have to tell you is Sarah, and I didn't say happy new year, everybody, so happy new year. Sarah, parking lot, when I'm saying Sarah, San Antonio River Authority. We applied for a grant for the parking lot. And we have been notified that we have received $100,000 for that. Intrepid is also the engineer for that. Now, this will not do all over the parking lot, okay? Because Councilman Jimenez looking at me like, I know that parking lot's more than that. So $100,000 towards the parking lot and improvements. And so we will revisit that wonderful resolution that EDC put forward back in the day, and that we'll restore that. And then, of course, we can always use Hotel Motel tax money. So I'll be coming back with some proposals going forward for that. But we do have the initial $100,000 to put on that parking lot, and we're really excited about that. Then we have several grants, items to hike and bike, and I know we have someone here who is interested in hiking biking. There's two applications for hiking bike. One is due February. So the Texas Wildlife is accepting grant applications, and we have a Texas Wildlife grant already. And they contacted us going, we think you are really qualified for this, so I guess I should apply. It is due February 1st, but it's not what I initially thought, Councilwoman. Originally, you know, hiking bike, I went to the bridges black and red, and I'm like, okay. But they want more of a nature path. I tried to say, well, what about some points where we can maybe do some investment in the pecan park? Because people walk there all the time. They really want more of a nature path. And so they're strongly recommending us because it, a wonderful park, sports complex. They think it would be a really good fit for it to have a nature walk between the pool side and the new side, to be able to do that. So I've been putting together some information, just a schematic for this application, and you'll probably have to pass a resolution if you care to apply. It's a 50-50, because a nature path is not necessarily a lot of construction. They want it to be natural. And so where else can you be close to nature but out there in that wonderful park, close to the San Antonio River? However, the next hiking bike path in April of 2019, TxDOT is putting together a grant application that's due in April. And this is the one that we've looked at, that we can go forward and move on that one. The thing about that was we need to really seriously think about it, because a small project at TEXDOT is 1.5 million. But we only can compete with other communities. And because it's such a large amount, I was thinking about maybe we can go into Pope. I know I spoke into the mayor about that, and we also spoke to the mayor of Pope. That they have their hiking bike as well, and that if we connect Pope where their park is all the way to Riverbend, that's over eight miles. And so it'll take a little conjunction between the two communities, but I'll be able to come back and start bringing some information and probably have some public hearing for that. That's due in April. Last but not least, Mayor, MNS will be available for an update on our USD water, the Plaza well. Please remember that the federal government is closed. Let the WGN us update on where we are for USD water, our Plaza well, the OPO's interconnect are seizing. And then we have TCQ violations that we are almost in compliance, so they'll be able to do that and bring us up to date. They will be present and present to you at the next meeting at the Lees on the 24th, on January 24th. Your engineer, MNS. Christmas decorations are officially down. Our Christmas tree is properly stored away. So we can make sure next year, EDC, we bring it out, shake off the dust and put it forward. The city's portion of it is that we are storing it at one of our city locations. They approach the shed in conjunction, the partnership between EDC and the Chamber of Parks is always there. And then all the lights, everything's down, and so hopefully we can move forward. Johnny and I have spoken, and hopefully as I'm going around giving signatures for the sidewalk and giving signatures to finish up the parking lot, we can introduce maybe some facade things that they're looking at doing for EDC to decorate more Christmas. Sounds like everybody they want to do some more things. And I know, Arista, you were part of that process, and so I need to look forward to it. Now, I like the lights where they are, but it's not Christmas lights. Everybody wants one of the building and twinkling. And so we're going to talk about doing those kind of things. Last but not least, Saturday, boy, you all work really, really hard. Saturday, we're going to have our workshop between 9:00 and 12:00 at our wonderful event center. And the purpose of that is just, you know, you all put a whole group of people together and we're going to build these wonderful boards that we have some board members here tonight. But we need to have everybody in the same room. So at the beginning of the year, as we want to start, we want to talk about those things, like the NWA said earlier, disjoints, and talk about our priorities and what you want to be able to do. Our city attorney will be attending, and here we have some rules to make sure we stay on. But also, it's really to brainstorm, just to talk about what each board needs to do to pick your brain, to be able to establish what you want to be able to do. And then once we establish that, we can take it to the public, to the business owners, and say, this is what we're thinking, to see if you can go, coming back to what Council Ortiz said, that buy-in, that partnership. So that's the purpose. We're going to be respectful of your time between 9:00 and 12:00. We did sneak in for EDC, a special meeting that was set first at 9:00 o'clock. It has been posted. It's in your packages. They're actually busy. Jack is already sold the last lot that they had over there, so he's working like any buses. We got him slowed down a little bit, but I think he's going to take some vitamins. He's a little tired. But he sold that last property, and because you all have the final say, you have to agree to allow him to do that. This will be the first reading. It'll be on your agenda for the next month, the second reading, because I think your schedule's closed February 1st. Is it closing on February 1st?
Honor before.
Honor before February 1st. So this is special meeting, and thanks to Councilman Edson for it, for me. So we'll have that special meeting just to read it. Thank you, Mayor, for waiting in two minutes. And then the next time, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting on the 24th. That ends my report. I'll answer any questions that you all may have.
This workshop will consist of, like, there was a leader, you know, that was asking about the streets. It is going to be about the streets, private vision.
You know, about whatever project that you want to do, what we're looking to do, hopefully, is to come up with the priorities, to direct the city, direct the staff, so that we can have an idea that you can express where your concerns are, to not only me, and the board's going to express that. And of course, this is open to the public, they can do. And we're just going to write it all down, and then we'll prioritize it and say, we would like to do 20 things, but we can't.
A little bit of brainstorming?
A lot of brainstorming. So we need everybody to participate. So I'm hoping that you all can. Sometime, I know it's kind of hard to believe, but your council can be a little intimidating. So we want you all to, you know, invite people to give your comments and to talk. It's really casual. It's not going to be, you know, you're not going to be sitting up high, you know, all sitting around the table together so we can figure this out. So we need comments like the streets. And I know Gloria, you mentioned about streets. Gerard, you live on streets. You're always on streets. So those kind of things, ideas like the ADA grants. Councilman, I was cleaning out my office. Yes, it's good now, looking a lot better. I found some things when we applied for the Baptist Mission people, and it's time to apply again if we want to go out for those kind of grants as well. Because people have been successful. The Park Foundation received a grant. I know that, that the voice goes in. Our city youth has received their second grant, and that's all based that you brought it together. So brainstorm is going to be important. There's most of the questions, everybody comment counts. Because as soon as we get it down and we write it down, you know, I'm going to take that on the road, and that's going to be our mission statement. I know it's not on the agenda, but he's speaking at the next chamber at once in February. And in your package, I did give to you our daily score. You can see, I highlight, you know, 50 points. I don't know if that was good enough, but they cut up a lot of people. If you see DQ, those people were disqualified. They didn't qualify. One of the things to qualify was that you had to do all the components and all those kind of things. So we jumped around the hoops and let guard line that separates them, those are larger cities. So the top of the smaller cities, comparable to our size, and on the bottom are the larger cities that were awarded. And as you see, we were awarded the maximum that you were allowed to do, because our plan was pretty good. That's the end of my report.
Thank you.
I just make a comment, I know it's short and sweet. I just want the public to know that $250,000 is from a grant, and that grant is free, free money, plus the $55,000 that the FEDC put in there. So it's a total of $305,000?
Yes, because EDC gave $55,000, $50,000, and then we have to do a match. We're going to use labor to be there to do things such as take away the spoils. And Republic has agreed to donate us, so that part, so that we can use their dumpsters to remove them, so we don't have to rent those. So all those in-kind things we're able to do. So it's exciting. But it would be, it would be a weird Florida, gets better. You know, construction is not pretty. And then, of course, timing is everything because we cannot have the sidewalks torn up during peanut festival.
Well, I know years ago, we did repairs on some sidewalks, and this was years ago. I think Councilman Ortiz was on the council with us. We coordinated either late in the evening when things were closing Saturdays and weekends. So to, you know, to try to make it as easy as possible. It's never easy.
It's never easy, yeah. And those are kind of things that we have to consider because, you know, when you do weekends and evenings, then it eats into the labor cost and what we can do. And we started one off today, talking to the engineer to talk about, we need to get proactive and reactive. You want to speak to this issue or that?
Right before Mr. Ruffey's, Councilman Jimenez had something he's been waiting.
I just wanted to say that one of our locals, Saturday is also having a meeting in downtown San Antonio, attend. They're at the Plaza. Julián Castro is announcing that he's running for president. So just let y'all know. If y'all want, if you have a chance, go by.
Mr. Ruffey?
Yes, and what I just wanted to reiterate is the inclusiveness of what we're doing. When Henrietta and I got together in the very first week, too, that we got to talking about this particular workshop plan that she had in mind, it was just right in line with what we were thinking from the FEDC. Because what we're wanting to do is to provide some inclusiveness in the process. The key components of our community is very instrumental and essential into making sure that we're all on one page. Because what we want to do is when we start attracting some of these businesses, we want to make sure that it's a very easy process for them to come in and to have the permitting process. The city is aware, the left hand knows what the right hand is doing at all times. And also as an educational component, so that for those who, what we refer to as a layperson, doesn't really understand the language of economic development or the city partnership, we can realistically tell them why we're not able to do some of these, what you call, first market priorities or secondary market prospects that we look for. And those basically mean like, if you're looking at the Chili's and the big venues and stuff, there are reasons why we can't attack those right now or bring those in. And so that process will be explained to you from our part, from the FEDC. and so that process will be explained to you from our part, from the FEDC, so that you can get a realistic understanding of what is actually feasible for our community here. And so I've got a very pretty good handle, a very good handle so far where we're at, so I'm really looking forward to Saturday to presenting some of these items to you and the public as well. So look forward to working with Henrietta.